Okay. I have six thirty-one, and I would like therefore to call to order the Planning and Zoning and Historic Commission of Thursday, February sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Franco, could you take the roll?
Chair. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Here.
Commissioner Reyes-Brauer?
Here.
Commissioner Myers is absent, and Chair Brunner?
Here.
Okay, having quorum, we can move on. First item of business is the approval of the January twenty, uh, January ninth, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as they are included in our packet?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have any comments, any amendments that we'd like to make?
No.
No discussion? Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
And Chair Brunner?
Yes. Okay, so the next item of business is the public comment. This is normally open to comments on agenda or non-agenda items. If you specifically want to make comments that you want in the public record of the open meetings that we'll have, the public hearings we'll have later, you can do that as well. So, I would recommend, if that's what you'd like to do, hold until then. Otherwise, definitely if it's a non-agenda item, please come up and speak if you'd like.
So, with that being said, Chair, we have one public comment and registration form. Stephen Levin, a resident.
Hi, yes. Steve. One thousand Dundee Avenue on the first house south of Gat. You guys may have gotten my email. I got a question about zoning here. In your email that just came out, my house is yellow residential in the future planning, where now it is B-three. So what are we doing? Are we regressing? Are we gonna change that corner to yellow residential? Because now it's B-three.
Yes, so...
Do we want to comment on this?
It's a few. You can address it now or address it during the hearing.
Yeah, I think, we can make a comment now, I believe. During the hearing, they'll, they'll address specifically in that the, what's included in the comprehensive plan is more of a thing we could do.
You know where I'm at, right?
I know, not the exact property, but yeah, I know the area.
It's the only yellow in all the maps and on the Wednesday board, too. It almost seems like an anomaly. Something's missing or something's wrong.
But the subdivision behind Gat is also in yellow.
That's correct.
And that's unincorporated currently.
That's correct, but I am an East Dundee resident since two thousand twelve, and I'm zoned B-three when I was annexed.
Okay.
And according to the future land use, all scenarios, I'm yellow. I'm back to yellow. So, maybe it's a mistake.
Okay. Yeah, well, and I'm sure you know that the village can't change it without, they would have to have a public hearing and, and all that, but, but you'd obviously get a chance at that time, but the, the folks that put the comp plan together, they're making a presentation tonight, and we can address it at that time as well.
So can we leave it at this point?
Albert Drive, first house south on the corner of Albert and twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Because when I moved in thirty-one years ago, I petitioned Kane County to be zoned B-two. When I was annexed, I became B-three, and future land use in all scenarios say I'm gonna be yellow, so it seems like a regression from what you guys want to do. Okay, now that you got me, I'll, I'll wait.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other comments? Okay, great. So, the first order of business is a public hearing. So may I have a motion to open a public hearing for a request of variation from section one five one dot zero zero six B five B of the building regulations that states, "No fence shall exceed six feet in height to allow a fence to be built at the properties located at three oh four Hill Street pin zero three two three three two zero dash zero zero one and three oh nine Jackson Street pin zero three two three three two zero zero six in East Dundee, Illinois six zero one one eight, located in the B-one downtown business district."
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
And Chair Brunner?
Yes. So, Franco, did we get any email or calls or mail in regards to this public hearing?
No.
Okay. I understand that this is a petition by the village in coordination with the residents adjacent to this property. So I, will you make a statement on this?
Yes, so as you know, the village purchased three oh nine and three oh four Hill to create the parking facility and the surface parking lot. The surface parking lot's on three oh nine Jackson Street, and during those negotiations for utility easements and construction easements with the adjacent property owners, a concern came up by the property owners that any potential light shining from the surface parking lot may cause a future nuisance shining into their houses, whereas for many years, this was a vacant lot, so they didn't have to worry about anything. In discussions with village staff and the residents, village staffs agreed that based on the unique topography of this location, where the houses are raised and it is a unique circumstance, that the parking lot may cause possibly light shining into their residence, that the village would petition for a two-foot variance from the fence code, which states only six feet is allowed, and we're requesting an eight-foot fence to be built at the property line.
Okay. Do we have anyone in the audience who's looking to speak on this item? Okay, see, no. Do we have any questions or comments for Franco?
Are we replacing any of the trees that existed there before the parking lot, or just putting up the fence?
So, as part of the easement agreements, there is compensation given to the property owners as part of the takings of their property to become a public easement, and as part of those takings, they were paid compensation for any privacy screening that they wish to put up. And the residents did indicate that they would put evergreens possibly, however, those have the tendency to die and may not be able to have as much screening as an eight-foot solid fence would.
Um, I don't mind granting the variance, but due to the topography, even an eight-foot fence, and if it's a hundred percent opaque, it's gonna possibly block some spillover light from hitting their, the bottom of their garage doors, but I don't, hey, we'd have to have a forty-foot high fence to block out any light spilling into the windows of, of the, of the house. So, I don't mind granting the variance. I don't know that it's going to...
Resaw them.
I agree.
That it's gonna have any real effect.
Has anybody done a photometrics on that?
Not on something like this.
I was curious.
No.
So I think it definitely would prevent the light from the, the residents is going into the parking lot.
Yeah.
You know, if that's something we care about, you know, it is a, that's an apartment building, so it has a lot of cars.
Correct.
Right? And, and they would be coming straight out.
The corner house is an apartment, and the other one is a one...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I guess the fence would deter like somebody pulls into the, into the new parking lot with their lights on.
That's true.
The fence will prevent that light from casting onto the house and/or somebody pulling out of the house garages. It would prevent the light from, so, so it will, it will work for blocking the cars.
For the reverse.
Yes.
Yes, definitely. Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, to feel, to feel like a fence, it will feel more like a proper fence because of the elevation change, you know?
Yeah, there is.
Or the residents, at least.
Yeah, yeah, because of the topography. As you saw in the packet, there is quite an elevation change.
Except one spot, six feet.
From one, a one point, yes, towards the middle of the, the parking lot on the east side compared to the north, west, northeast side of the lot, it changes up to six feet.
Okay.
You say it can be placed at the top of the slope or down near the bottom?
The, the property line is about approximately two and a half feet, two feet east of the curb of the surface parking lot.
So it's gonna be a little bit...
Yeah, maybe three.
Down.
Yeah, right behind the light posts.
Okay. Do we have any other comments then for that public hearing?
I would just say as high of a fence as, as needed.
Yeah.
In this situation.
Okay, well then, could we have a, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Can we, Commissioner Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
And Chair Brunner?
I think most of them are no, but...
Okay. So, let's go through and, and review the findings and facts provided by the village. So the first question, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the zoning conflict. Not applicable. I don't think they need this for money.
Yeah.
You know, I, so...
Yeah, I agree.
N or NA, that's, we can, we can keep that. The player of the owner is due to unique circumstances. What do you guys think on this? Yes, I, the argument for yes is it's a fence on a hill against a large parking complex, which is not a, you know, that we put in place for, you know, it's not a common occurrence in our town. There is no other situation like this.
Well, I would argue that there is. All up and down, the valley going up the hill, every, every house going uphill street has the same issue to their neighbor above them, so I, I don't believe it's a, I don't believe it's unique within our village limits. It may be, it, unto itself, it's unique.
Yeah, the, the, the unique part would have to come into the fact that it will have, like, this type of angle, so you, how, if you want to call it perpendicular to the, the facing lot line, parking two feet away from it.
Right.
Which our normal residential doesn't, you'll have garages, you don't have driveways like this right up people's houses on a hill.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, to me, it could be either way, and either way wouldn't change my mind on how I vote on that.
Yeah, okay. So what do you guys think? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, okay. The variation, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the locality? I don't think so. You, you think, okay. This particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of the specific property involved would bring a particular hardship upon the owner as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the regulations were strictly enforced? I mean, you guys want to change this one? This one, it's...
Er, good.
I mean, okay. Well, yeah, unless you have a, an argument to...
No, no, I, I mean, I could make an argument, but again, I don't know that it, the fact we're only granting two additional feet, I know the, uh...
Yeah.
I, I, I've been thinking longer and harder about vehicles and different height vehicles with lights and that, I, I'm fine leaving it as a yes.
Yeah, so the key would be is if, you know, if we got something like this again, you know, on a hill, like that we didn't foresee.
Right.
We would say it's the same, and we'd grant it for these reasons.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, the conditions upon which the petition for variation based on would not be applicable, applicable generally to other properties in the same zoning classification. So while there are things on hills, there aren't things that have this, I think, parking arrangement right next to it.
Right, right. Different uses.
Yeah, and it's interesting for us that it's a joint petition, like, I don't know for sure who, whose it is, you know, from, but I'm looking at from both of our, the village and the residents' perspective.
Correct.
Who, who could be harmed. And then the purpose of the variation is not exclusively based on the desire to make more money. That's definitely a yes. Okay, so we're not gonna...
What about seven, eight, and nine?
Oh, that's not, oh, you didn't get a double permit.
Sorry.
It's okay. The alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property. I would say it's the topology. If we're saying it's the housing, it's the residents, they definitely don't. If it's the village, they did put a parking lot right next to it.
Right.
I think this is more for the residents.
Yeah.
And we're being nice.
Exactly, yeah.
So, I'm okay with the yes on that. The granting of the variation will not be detrimental, oh, sorry, is everybody else?
Yes, I agree.
The granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injures to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located.
That's definitely a yes.
Yeah. The proposed variation will not impair adequate supply of light in air to adjacent property or substantially increase their danger, the danger of fire or otherwise endanger the public safety or sustainability to measure impair property values of the neighborhood. I think that's, yes. Doing the right amount of impairment of light.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the finding of facts for three oh four Hill Street pin zero three two three three two zero 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 one and three oh nine Jackson Street pin zero three two three three twenty dash zero zero six as presented.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
And Chair Brunner?
Yes. I would like to make a motion that we consider sending a, a positive or an in-favor motion for recommendation to the village board of a variation from section one five one dot oh oh six, parentheses B, parentheses five, parentheses lowercase b, of the building regulations that states, "No fence shall exceed six feet in height to allow a fence to be built on the property located at three oh four Hill Street pin zero three two three three two zero 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 one and three oh nine Jackson Street pin zero three two three three two zero zero six in East Dundee, Illinois six zero one one eight, to a height of eight feet, located in the B-one downtown business district."
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
And Chair Brunner?
Yes. Good job getting the eight feet in there.
Yeah.
So it's not gonna be a hundred-foot fence.
Can't afford that.
No, no. Okay, fantastic. So now moving on to our second item of business, and this is the public hearing on the comprehensive plan. So, may I have a motion to open the, the public hearing on a request to hear and consider adoption of a new comprehensive plan for the village of East Dundee. So moved. Fantastic.
Seconded.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
And Chair Brunner?
Yes. So, Franco, did we get any emails, calls, mail on this topic?
Uh, we, we received one email, which you heard tonight during the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
It was the same gentleman, and various drop-ins, not formally, but drop-ins during the open house.
Okay.
But nothing formally to be passed along to the PCHC.
Okay, fantastic. And I believe we have the presenters of the, or the authors of the comprehensive plan here? So if you guys could approach the podium, and if you're both gonna speak, we'll need to swear you in.
Fundraisers right in?
Should we, anybody out in the audience?
Yeah, and you want to, uh...
Did you want to speak on this? Now's your chance, I could swear you in.
Well, I, I will have my question and like to answer.
So, yeah, everybody who's wishing to speak tonight or may speak, we can swear you all in right now.
All right. One at a time, please state your name.
Todd Babel.
Mim Evans.
Steve Lett.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Fantastic. So yes, you may proceed.
Okay. Well, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Mim Evans, I'm with the NIU Center for Governmental Studies, Todd Van Anlaas from EGRITINOX. We partnered on this project, and we've enjoyed spending the last many months in your community. So, thank you for, again, for giving us the opportunity to, to serve you on this and as we advance it this way. Our goal tonight is to present a high-level overview of how the plan was put together, why the plan was put together, and the basic sections within it, and then we can take questions if you have a question about something specific, and if you have minor editorial sorts of concerns, if you could pass them along to Franco, he can pass those along to us. So, we're here tonight to see what revisions need to be made in the plan. It's definitely not a final document at this point. So, the reason that a comprehensive plan was prepared, actually, there were several things. The first was your existing plan is quite old at this point, and I think we all can agree, an awful lot has happened since the last plan was prepared and then amended. It seems like a different world to me when I look back at that, so certainly wise to think about updating the plan. The second one is that preparing the plan is a process in addition to the end-product document that you'll have for years to come to work with. It's an opportunity for the community to express what they're interested in, it brings people together, and, and it just is a, a great exercise that, that we find the community enjoys, and here you had quite a few people who were involved, and we'll see that on the next slide. The plan is a map for the future, it's supposed to be long-term, it's not tomorrow, but it's supposed to be a long-term vision into the future and cover all aspects of the physical environment. And finally, the plan itself is not a legal document. You have to formally adopt it, but it doesn't carry the weight of law. Zoning does that, but your zoning code generally is brought into line with the plan, so it's the basis for that. So lots of things that come from preparing a plan. So the process that we went through, and you can kind of see that the, the plan document goes right along in this order pretty much, we began with some background information, a lot of interviews, site visits, that sort of thing, that's all presented in the document. Community input, we'll talk about in just a minute, but this is our, our philosophy and certainly the village's philosophy has been that this plan should be built from the residents up and not dictated from the top. The task force, we had a group of maybe fifteen people, all volunteers, who dedicated four evenings, four lengthy evenings, to putting this together, and you'll see their names inside the front cover of the document itself, so a big thanks to them. And they, they really, their, their work is, is all over this document, that we didn't come up with what the vision ought to be, they did. We didn't come up with the goals, they did. So it's very much, we facilitated, and it's their ideas. Now we're in the document preparation phase, we're, we've gotten you the draft, but we're ready for revisions, and then finally, you folks will recommend adoption when you are satisfied that the document meets what you think it ought to, and then it'll go for adoption by the Board of Trustees. So I wanted to talk for a minute about community input. We talked about the task force and how much work they put in. Their idea, their purpose was to share their expertise, because they all know different aspects of the community, to represent the community, because they were different ages and income levels, and some were in apartments and some were in houses, and, you know, they were not all the same kind of residents, so we got a good cross-section there, and to actually do the work developing some of the plan elements. So they were a very key part of putting this plan together. But all residents had a chance to participate. We had a good response to the community survey, good response to the business survey, and not only do those get us the information, but it's even for people who don't respond, it's outreach from the village to say, hey, we care. So even if they don't take the time, they still have been touched in that way, and every single resident who has an email address and every business received that invitation. So I think that's a very positive thing. We had a project website, as you can see, it was used a lot for people keeping up with what was going on, and there was an opportunity to leave comments there as well. The city, Franco, have, has helped with spreading the word by whatever means they're using, whether it's social media, press releases, whatever, and the open house was well-attended. We, we enjoyed meeting with so many people that evening. So, I think that, that you should feel good about the amount of opportunity that folks had to comment on this plan, and then tonight, of course, is another opportunity for that. So this is the vision statement that the task force came up with, and I'm not gonna read the whole thing to you, but the gist of it is that people who live here feel connected to each other, that this is a community of neighborhoods, that they want to maintain that, that they want that mix of businesses that the community has to, to continue to flourish, that there's respect for the historic aspects of the community, and that they very much treasure the Fox River and want to see that become even more of an asset to the community than it is now. So you can read that on your own and, and see some of the things, but those are some of the major points that came up. So once we got beyond the vision and, and there was an idea of what the ideal future for the community was, then we move into developing a whole lot of more detail about how to get there. So the first step was to develop goals, which are achievable outcomes that you have to get to in order to make that vision real, and there are nine of them in the plan, and we'll go through them in a minute. And there's an example there of what a goal might be, and you can see that, you know, it's kind of a high level talking about what the community ought to be. Then you move into the objectives, which are specific steps that you need to take to achieve that goal. So we're moving into more specificity the further we go into the, into the frame here, going to the right. So we can see if the first one, the goal, you wanted to preserve the historic and traditional character, then one objective might be to ensure that downtown remains strong and, and is an attractive central focus of the community. Then we move into strategies, and that's something that is an actual project that someone could undertake. So in this case, we have encouraging residential development near downtown, which, and then if you read it backwards, you can see the residential development supports the downtown, and the, the downtown supports having that historic, traditional kind of community. So that's the way these pieces all fit together. Okay, so there's lots of pieces like that. So these are the nine goals, and I'm, we're not gonna go through all this, you can read it at your leisure if you haven't read them already, but I just wanted to give you an example of the categories that the, the goals fall into. So land use, housing, and economic development, and then if you look down, you see there's the goal for land use right underneath it, and then under that, the list of objectives to reach that goal. And then you'll also see there that there are priorities. And the task force, again, prioritize these, and they prioritize them by thinking about three things. How feasible is it to do it? How much community support is there for that particular objective? I forgot the last one. I had that written down. Oh, how much impact it was likely to have, 'cause you really have to have all three for something to be a high priority. It has to be feasible, you don't want to make something a high priority that is gonna be very difficult and unlikely to do. It has to have community support, because you're not going to devote a lot of resources into something that the community isn't really behind. And finally, you want it to have an impact, because those first two things might be possible, oh, we could do it, and all people are behind it, but it's not gonna make much difference in anybody's quality of life or a business or the economy or anything, so you really need to eat all three of those things for something to be high priority, and then, you know, as things maybe didn't meet those three criteria quite as well, they move down in priority. So that's what the priorities are there. And as the trustees go through things like budget discussions, and they have to allocate resources, we hope that these priorities will help them in deciding where they want to put their time and money, where, where staff gets directed to spend their time, that sort of thing. All right, so more of the goals and objectives, access and mobility, community facilities and assets, and environmental sustainability. And environmental sustainability was one that the group was very strong about. When you have the natural resources that this community has, that, that becomes something people are thinking about a lot. The river, the forest, you know, that you have, that sort of thing.[1711.16] And then the last three, community design, utilities and infrastructure, and communications. And with that, those things all fed into then developing the future year land use map to support those goals and objectives. Todd.
Great. Thanks for having us again. It's great to see you all again. I haven't seen you all in a while, but good to have you back, good to be back. So this is the future land use plan. Oftentimes, this is the part of the plan that most people kind of go to first, whether you're a property owner, a developer, a builder, or someone like looking to open a business or do something with your property. This is usually the thing that they like to look at the most because it shows their property, what can you do with it, and so on. One thing to note, and you all know this, is that East Dundee is very landlocked. There's not much room for too much outward growth, partly because you have the river on the west, you have communities like Carpenter'sville, Barrington, Elgin, and so on. Those are the gray areas that surround you. You have Forest Reserve to your east, and then the McGrath Wildlife Preserve, that's that big green space south in the southern part of the map. But then everything in that black dotted line is your existing municipal boundary. So you can actually start to see that, I'll actually show you on, I'll show you actually in a second, but this shows you how all the different land uses interplay with each other. Yellow is residential, red is commercial, pink is office, the dark purple is industrial, and then you have other shades, like the green is park space. Up to that one big green spot along 25 is a golf course, and then the lighter green is open space. But you can start to see how all this builds together. And then the numbers that you see on the bottom part of your screen, that starts to tell you, like, if you were to build out certain parts of your area, as I said, there's not much room for growth. I'm going to move away from, like, just to point this out, but the only area that you really have to grow for residential without going over is something that's currently industrial, commercial, is this, like, trapezoid to south against Route 72. You could do a mix of residential, it could be single-family, it could be multifamily, kind of depends on what developers are looking for, what your community is, would like to support.
Are you advocating then with this land use plan that we annex that? Because that's a part of town, right?
Yeah, that is currently out of town. There's not much, there isn't actually much large vacant space in your current municipality.
Right, right.
Correct. So if the developer were to come with a plan for that area, you can talk to them and annex it in.
So your numbers include, though, then that we ban that?
Correct, yes. So those numbers, so the 3,157, that's your current population based off 2022 estimates. If you were to build out that residential area that I pointed out, that trapezoid, that would add roughly 1,267 new residents.
Yeah, okay.
And then that would, your ultimate population would be roughly a little over 4,000, and that would increase your population by roughly 40%. Yes?
So the, I know in the 2022 plan, most of the property north of 72, north of Christina Drive and that, that is now showing industrial, all of that was to be zoned residential. That's now, with this plan, it's completely changing?
So I'll actually show you, we actually played around with that. You'll actually see scenario C on your far right. You'll see that area that's currently purple in scenario A. We actually looked at that, and when we talked that over with the task force, we thought, what could you do if you actually started introducing a lot more residential, maybe a little bit more moderate for scenario B?
Okay.
Or scenario C, if you're really aggressive with it, what could that look like? But there is a lot of complications with doing that, that task force really discussed that, and what they were most comfortable with was what you see now, I'll go back to the bigger map.
Yeah.
Is keeping everything north of Route 72 around Christina Drive, all, keeping that as industrial, and again, keeping the residential mostly concentrated just south of 72 in that area.
And this then doesn't consider the Hager?
Correct. So we do have that little note on the left where we do say that the Hager property, the village's vision for that is either residential or mixed use, which is consistent with what the plans that you got.
They just talk about it on the page.
Correct, yeah. We saw the press release, so, yeah.
And I guess with that, I'm sure you've had some conversations with the property owner?
With, are you talking about the purple?
No, no, the yellow that you're showing south of 72.
That area, we did not talk with the property owner, but that was areas that, when we talked with the task force, those were areas that we consistently thought could introduce residential. You'll actually see in scenario A, that area that you show residential, which is actually not shown any residential, so.
The only reason I bring it up is that's owned by the Plody companies.
Plody, correct.
And Plody is currently mining the Max McGrath Wildlife and probably will be for the next 70 or 80 years, and that's their main ingress and egress of all their gravel trucks and that. So I don't see them, it'd be a major expense for them to move that to another roadway. So I don't, I mean, while we can show that, I don't think it'll happen in any of our lifetimes.
I mean, that's one of the things about a comprehensive plan is that it's very broad, long-range.
Yeah.
And again, for a town like this, even for towns that have a lot of room for growth, even if you show a lot of residential growth on a map, a lot of times it doesn't
Sure.
Come to fruition like that.
Yeah.
So, but very good point.
Yeah, I mean, generally, it is, I think, a fitting place for residential, you know, if we're not considering those constraints.
So it's, as a Plody approach, he said, hey, we're actually open to negotiate.
In 80 years.
And be consistent with what, for what happened, yes.
Was there any discussion about possibly having, other than multifamily residential, having something that was of a higher density? Because like the plan that got presented for Hager, that, that's like double any of our existing ordinances for multifamily, so it's twice as high, and I don't know that if we throw it into the current multifamily, then are we essentially saying we'd accept that type of development in any of our multifamily?
It could be, like, a lot of times, senior living is often categorized as multifamily. Oftentimes, those aren't always high rises, that can be kind of spread out, one or two levels, so that could be an option. Also, keep in mind that what's shown here on the map, it may not even look like that. Developer could say, I want to do a little bit more multifamily because I want more senior living versus less single-family homes. It could be any iteration of this, so.
And also, while we have this map up, I'd like to circle back to the comment we had in public.
Sure.
And let Mr. Levin speak if you would like here, but the property he's talking about is the thing off of, it's the yellow piece in between all the red right on 25.
That's correct, exactly there.
Yeah, we spoke at the open house.
What?
I think we spoke at the open house last week.
Right, I didn't get an answer.
Yeah, so, so, so something like that, right? So do you, this specific property in general, was that the, like, were you, did you carefully consider that property, or what would make it a yellow or a red? I mean, it's right on the border.
Yeah, so right now, it's, the way we considered it was that a lot of your commercial development is going to happen, most likely going to happen at the intersection of 72 and 25. So for it to jump down to where the property that we're talking about, it would have to jump through the McGrath area, and unless they're looking to sell their property, having commercial going south of 72 along, south along 25 all the way to that area probably won't happen. Again, it could, it could happen if McGrath wants to sell, but it's a wildlife preserve, so probably not.
Right, right, but I think he's, he's, he's saying the opposite. What he's saying is that he's currently a legal non-conforming use.
Correct.
Because he's zoned B3, but he's using it as a residence. And, and so he, in the current, the map early on in the plan, the current map, leaving it yellow makes sense because he's currently using it as a house. But the future land plan with its own B3 should be shaded in the same orangish-brown as everything around there and not yellow.
Well, right now, the way we did it was, existing land use is yellow because it's a house, and we didn't foresee it becoming commercial unless he wishes it to be and he wants to convince you as the plan commissioner.
Well, no, 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 it's already zoned B3.
It's zoned B3, so it's legally non-conforming right now.
It's illegal non-conforming right now because he, he got the B3 zoning, but he's using it as a house.
Correct.
And he wants to keep the B3 zone.
Correct, correct.
That's correct, and that would be for the sale of my house for future development to someone else.
Right, right.
So I don't see why it would regress to a residential yellow.
Right, right, yeah. I feel that you need to amend that little spot and make it the commercial orange that everyone else is.
We can certainly do, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's in line with, I mean, I see in general, we do have other residents in town who don't like it when their houses get marked business. This has happened for other people. So in this case, it's a special thing, and we can.
And this is the great opportunity to present that case.
Yeah.
And talk it over, and then we can make that map change, make it red so that he can keep his B2. Is it B2?
B3.
B3, B3. Keep that B3 so that when you amend your zoning code, we will make sure that it stays B3.
Yeah, exactly.
Correct.
Yeah, and I, because I totally get to the point, you know, back to the point you're making, yeah, I don't see us ever connecting it, but that area right now is, I think, a self-sustaining commercial area. It's those are big, you know, the Milk Pail and Gat are, you know, big revenue, I think, revenue areas, and I think that will maintain, you know, this little bastion of different commercial for quite some time. Okay, great. Your question, okay, great.
Thank you, Jim.
Great, thank you for your time.
Okay, cool.
Let's see. So this was, again, just showing the scenarios. We talked these over with the task force. They decided to do something, very rarely do they decide on one of the three. They always say, like, we like mixing A and B, or B and C, or whatever. So what we actually wound up doing was something close to A, a little bit of B, so that's why we wound up as this as the preferred scenario. Again, we can always amend things based on conversation we have with you now before it goes to the board.
So one other question that I'll have, since we have this up, just getting through all my questions on the map. You know, I looked through a lot of the numbers that you guys included in the presentation, and one was, you know, we have two, the average, like, residents per households, two, where the Kane County average is 2.8. And our age is a little higher, so maybe we have less, you know, people with young families, which would, you'd imagine, raise the household count. So if we went to like 2.8 from two, and since we're like all single-family homes, I think we could handle that type of change with our current housing, it would put us up to about 4,000 people.
Yeah.
You didn't consider, like, demographic changes when doing the number calculations?
We did, no, we just based it off the persons per household.
That would precedent what happened.
And densities, but you know, account for if there was going to be an increase in person per household, because that's kind of hard to.
Do you guys see cyclical types of trends like that in towns? Like, you know, with us being at an average age of 54, would you expect in 20 years, we'd also be?
I mean, right now, we're seeing the senior population growing in all the communities, so that, that your current number may hold steady or may decrease slightly.
Yeah.
But it's hard to say, though.
Okay, okay. So yeah, it in general assumes we'll kind of maintain our current demographic rate down.
Yeah, and these aren't hard and fast numbers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Correct, so.
That's good. I'm glad, I'm glad it's, you know, I think I'm in line with the residents in not wanting the one where we add 4,000 new residents.
Yeah, we used to, actually, when we used to do land use planning, we used to not throw out these numbers because sometimes it scares people, but it's actually, it kind of adds a reality check, because let's say you did have a lot of room, and all that green, that's McGrath. People could say, why don't you just make that all yellow? It's like, okay, let's do that. But then when you start actually rooting out all the numbers and saying, well, that's going to triple your population, then people get really frightened on that, especially for a town that really prides itself on its small-town character, even that 40% growth. And again, as Commissioner Scarpelli said, that may not happen in our lifetime either. You may stay at that 3,000 until we are, we're all old, so.
Great.
Okay, so we talked about this. One thing that we did do is, so this was a composite of all the land uses put together. One thing that's actually really unique about your community is when we divided out each land use, you started to see really distinct patterns for residential. So you have your single-family in dark yellow, kind of your moderate density, like duplexes and so on, and the light orange, and then your multifamily, like apartments and senior living in dark, in brown. That's all the residential. It's mostly to your, to the west around downtown, the surrounding neighborhoods, a little bit, a few, a few of it is east of Illinois Route 25, but most of it's to the west of 25. Commercial is pretty much what you would expect. A lot of your commercial is either downtown or along your major corridors like 25 and Route 72, and a lot of that's consistent even when you build out for future office. There's not much office. If there is, again, it's along your corridors, similar to commercial. But then this is kind of the distinct one, is that all your industrial is east of 25. Even the area that was recently annexed last month by Beverly, Route 72 in Beverly, that's, adds to your industrial base and so on, and that's, there could be some more that could be annexed as well. So you'll actually see this in the actual printout of the plan, but we often don't do this for a lot of communities, but to show it for East Dundee, it really shows how distinct kind of like your land use segments are, and in a way, it really helps. It helps your, keep all your residential kind of concentrated around your downtown, commercials along your corridors, and industrial really all concentrated, close to the interstate, close to Beverly Road, and so on for that accessibility, and just the infrastructure's already there for industrial and your truck traffic. You don't want it going all over town. You'd rather have, if you're going to have truck traffic, have it concentrated in one area, so. And then, just to round out the end of our presentation, so the last chapter of the plan is the implementation plan, where, as Mim talked about, this kind of builds out the whole idea of, you have your goals and objectives, and then the strategies you'll see in the middle column. So those are your very specific projects or tasks that you can really assign specific projects to really get things in the ground. And then the last column on the far right are certain resources so that when Franco and your village staff are looking through the plan on a day-to-day basis, and they want to tackle some of these strategies, they have some of these resources to go to just as a first step so that they know what to look up. We'll actually make these clickable links so that if it's, if he's using it on his laptop, he can click on the link and it'll take him directly to the source, so.
Appreciate it.
Makes your job easier. And other than that, so the next step is getting your comments. After tonight, we'll revise the plan as needed, and then it'll go up to village board for their review and adoption, so.
Can you turn to page 10?
I don't have it on the screen, but.
Do you have a copy?
For now, just throw out the map, just for discussion of page 10.
The hard copy over there. The one with the bar chart.
Yeah.
Yes, we have it open.
I would just ask you to check those, those sales tax figures because it's showing $2.6 million of drug and miscellaneous retail. We, the only, well, we had a couple of drugs. We had a Walgreens, we had a Dominix pharmacy inside the Dominix store, and there was a pharmacy inside the Walmart, but the Dominix left in 1995 or '06, as did the Walgreens, and the Walmart left in 2017. So I don't know, I don't know of any business in the village currently selling drugs.
But it includes miscellaneous retail, which is a whole lot of truly miscellaneous, so it's probably not.
We truly don't have a lot of miscellaneous.
We'll definitely check it.
Yeah, check, check that, and then.
I would expect that it's.
And then the building materials as well, the lumber, and, because we don't have any type of lumber or building supply house anymore. We had Edward Heinz.
Does it count, does asphalt count as building material?
I don't know.
That would include the gravel.
Okay, okay.
So that one, I think, is, is correct.
Yeah.
Because we specifically looked, what category would that fall into?
The gravel.
So that's why that one's big.
Okay, yeah, because way down, way over to the right, it says general merchandise, 12,000, and that number's believable. I just, I don't know that, and the drinking and eating, I believe, is that, and the automotive, I believe, is, but the.
Yeah, that is interesting.
There's a couple in the middle.
We'll double-check that, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you have the comment on the picture for the.
Oh, yeah.
On the school.
Yeah, if there's images that you want us to swap out, certainly.
Well, I don't know that, I don't know that I want you to swap it out, but.
That's on the education section. So it describes it, it's showing the picture of the middle school, and it's saying it's the Oak Ridge School, but it's primarily the picture showing the middle school.
What page is it?
I'm trying to find it.
I'm so lost.
Eight, page eight, where it says it's Oak Ridge School.
Oh, okay.
But that's.
Oh, yeah, we can, we'll check that.
Yeah, that, that, there is, the far east end of that building is called Oak Ridge School, but I don't know that we necessarily want to highlight that. That's where all the kids that get expelled from all the other schools go, is the behavioral disorder school. The bulk of that building is occupied by Carpenter'sville Middle School.
Okay.
And then as you move, on that campus, as you move westerly, you've got the DeLacy Center, which channels a lot of special needs and that, assessments and things like that. And then east, west of that is. things like that, and then east, west of that is Parkview Elementary, and uh Parkview and CM, Parkview is our grade school, CMS is our middle school, and then Dundee Crown High School is the high school for East Dundee, but that's, that's in Carpenter'sville as well. That, that's the only, I think the only school we have in town is Emmanuel Lutheran.
Yeah.
I remember this when I started looking for school districts, because we wanted, initially, we wanted to, we often in, uh, when we're doing the resident survey, we'll ask the schools to send the lead to the survey home in the online backpacks, but I couldn't find a school that was mostly Dundee kids, so they, and we didn't want all these people from these other towns.
Well, it's the nature.
So that, I had to put that aside, but again, yeah, there's not really.
Carpenter'sville's like more than, but it's twenty times bigger than us.
Right, yeah, so that that strategy didn't work.
Okay, um, any other comments or questions? Okay, so the part that that I think is really interesting, and I don't know, um, well, personally, I'm really excited about this, because it's gonna make it a lot easier for our jobs, and I'm very pleased to see, you know, in the implementation section, um, if if everyone didn't get a chance to really review that section, that one's the one that's really applicable to what we're gonna be doing, because it's gonna say for all of the things, you know, what was the guidelines for biz- for building out and stuff, so like, when people come here with specialty uses or variances that they want, and we maybe say, well, hey, you know, if you follow our guidelines, maybe you don't need to do that variance, or maybe you can tweak this to be a little more in line with our our village. We have all of those things now in the the plan, which is great in the section five, so uh definitely, if this gets approved as is, really looking forward to using that, and I would encourage all of us to really, you know, bone up on that. And then also, just to highlight, you know, we have the, in the implementation plan, you have the checklist of all of the sections with the details, the thing you were just showing.
Correct.
Which, again, is something we can use, you know, like, it's not on this one, but um on this, the the special use findings of fact, where like, how is it aligned with the comprehensive plan? And that's something that we can then reference and say, there, it's doing that, that's what we want to do, or it's this page, yeah, this, you know, that right there. So um, I think that's really great, uh, if you do, if you, you know, now that I'm highlighting it, we look at it, we still have time to get back when it goes up before the board, if we, if anybody has more more comments, but I I really like what was in there, just want to highlight that.
So what is, is, this is a, these are some things that we can easily change, so what is, proceed however you're most comfortable, but often you'll recommend adoption pending these revisions, and then you don't have to deal with it again. You know, if you can move on, we get Franco the revised copy, and you know, that step, plan commission step is.
Yeah. I am pleased with it as, you know, pending the things we've already discussed, or including the things we've already discussed.
So any other?
I would agree, I think it was very well done.
Yeah, so thank you very much for driving that through the village and all the work you guys did. So um with that, would we want to close the public hearing? Unless there's any other comments from the audience?
Well, we do have a comment.
Please come up, and we'll have to swear to you later.
My name's Mary.
Mary, do you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And your last name, Mary?
Nash.
Thanks.
And it's my husband, Terry. Um, we have a question about the Hager property development. We live next door, close to the parking lot, and um we think it's a horrible idea to put one-hundred-and-thirty-six units into that one area right there, which is gonna be approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-six cars. We can't get out of our driveway when school lets out at Emmanuel, it's, we got traffic all the way down to the end of the street. Um, one-way street is river, you know, I don't know how you plan on developing that, but I saw the pictures, how the development is extremely ugly, it doesn't fit in with the historical, yet you're trying to keep East Dundee historical. Our house is eighteen forty-seven, it's brick, it's a, you know, it's got a plaque, it's historical, it used to be um an oxen barn, and if you stick those ugly apartments in there, it's just gonna take the whole neighborhood down, and we feel that it's a terrible decision to put those one-hundred-and-thirty-six apartments. If you could do townhomes that were reasonably attractive in brick, like, I think the parking garage, you did a nice job on that, if you could kind of go along with the brick theme and do that, like townhomes, you know, not huge multi-level apartments, because, again, then we'd have to put in a variance for a forty-foot fence, so people aren't looking in our house, and most of our neighbors feel the same way, we've all taken care of our houses for a long time, and it's, you know, it's a historical, it's a nice block, it's busy though, and it's just gonna continue to get busier, so we wanted to put our two cents in to tell you what a terrible idea that was, to put one-hundred-and-thirty-six apartments in.
Yeah, so I, um, did you watch the recording? I mean, this isn't really our public hearing, but I will talk a little bit about this.
I'm sure, there's a future.
Yeah, yeah, so, so that was the first meeting on Monday in regards to that, and all of the things, nothing's been decided yet, right?
Okay, that's what I feel.
And, you know, we haven't heard anything about that yet at PNC.
Okay.
That, so um, uh, you could maybe talk, Franco, would you mind syncing up with them at the end of the meeting?
Sure.
To pretty much give them next steps, like, to get more involved in the process of understanding how we're gonna move forward?
Right, right.
Yeah, so.
You know, if we could put some input as far as designing the buildings, um, my husband is a builder, and I mean, he could, you know, put in some suggestions, too. There was a fighter there today.
Yeah, yeah, I saw. Yeah, yeah, I didn't see it, but I saw the news.
We saw it.
Yeah.
They threw a bunch of wood out, but anyway, so we just wanted to be among the first to just project that we just don't like that idea.
Yeah.
You know, it's historic, because Hager Pottery was historical, were historical in some of those houses that the workers used to live in, I mean, they've been there for a long time, so we just wanted to make that comment.
Yes, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes. Okay, uh, anybody else? Okay.
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Riz Brathard?
Yes.
Chair Broner? Yes.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion that we can, uh, that we uh recommend that the board uh adopt the new comprehensive plan as presented along with all the comments made at tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Riz Brathard?
Yes.
And Chair Broner?
Yes. Okay, that closes our new business, we, as we have no other business, um, onto staff reports.
I don't have any.
So I guess we'll just touch, would there still be time to sign up for the training that you you mentioned?
Yes, I think uh the deadline might be next week, I'll confirm it, I'll go back online next week and check when the deadline is, but so far, I have two commissioners that signed up.
I signed up, and and Steve signed up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should've signed up, too.
It's a findings of fact.